Good morning. I called order the May 23, 2023, meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Haye. Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Okay, I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Next item is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes tax rule adjustments, accounts payable, public forum agenda payroll, three sets of county commission meetings from May the 2nd, May the 9th, and May the 16th. Is there any commissioners who wish to amend the agenda?
Move approval. Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. We'll move into the action items. Item number one.
RFA number 2023-104, audited financial statements for 2022. Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I don't have a lot to say this morning other than to introduce Randy Hoffmeyer from Lindbergh Vogel Pierce Ferris, our auditor, who will present the financial statements for 2022.
Morning, Randy.
Good morning.
Morning.
Before I go over the independent auditor's report and audit opinion, I want to give a little background as to your financial statements and how they're prepared. Each year, the county has asked us to prepare or draft the financial statements. So we take the county's accounting records and we prepare the financial statements from that information. That information is prepared on the regulatory basis of accounting. So it's more efficient for us to do it that way because that's how the county maintains their records. So your independent auditor's report. The first thing we do is because you prepare your financial statements on the regulatory basis rather than in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP, we have to provide, we have to give an adverse opinion on the audit in accordance with GAAP. But immediately after that, we provide an unmodified or clean opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. And the independent auditor's report also contains information like the auditor's responsibility for the audit, including the standards that we use preparing, you know, performing the audit. It also discusses management's responsibility for the financial statement. So the, these financial statements are based on the records from the county. And so management is to take responsibility for, for that and for the internal control related to the preparation of them. We provide a draft copy of the audited financial statements to Phil, and he made a number of inquiries about things. And I think he was satisfied with the way that they were prepared. So I'm not going to read the financial statements to you. There's probably close to 70 pages here. So I'll ask if you have any questions about the financial statement.
I do not. What do I know about it anyway? I guess we know we can spend a lot of money, I guess, is what we can, one thing we can say. But we appreciate your attention to the, to our needs and wants as far as the audit goes and keeping us in compliance with the state regulations and so forth. So
Okay.
Other than that, I'll let any other commissioner say your question.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt RFA 2023-104 as presented.
Before we do that, I would like to ask if there's any public comment on the action we're about to take. All right, it has been moved. Is there a second?
A second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-104, audited financial statements for 2022. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries four zero. Thank you. Item number two.
RFA number 2023-99, contract approval for Kansas local bridge improvement program.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning.
Morning, commissioners. So Sling County was afforded, awarded funds by the Kansas Department of Transportation through a program called the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program. This program will fund 85% of the construction costs up to $350,000. And when going through the application process, I submitted two bridge replacement projects on McReynolds Road between Halsted and Fairchild. These projects are, the scope of these projects is to remove two existing very low-posted bridges and replace those with a concrete low-water crossing. Sling County was also awarded a one-time payment of $50,000 for the removal of a bridge on Lapsley Road just west of Old 81. And this project will be very similar to the other projects in that the existing bridge will be removed and a concrete low-water crossing will be constructed in its place. You should have in your packet a location map of these, these projects. All of these projects are still in a design development stage. You know, so we're, right now, I've got, the plans are pretty well, about 80% completed, and I've submitted for permits, and so I'm kind of on hold until I get word back from the regulatory agencies. But I am anticipating a construction either, you know, this late this fall or sometime this winter. In order to accept the funds, the board of county commissioners must approve and sign to the attached agreement between KDOT and Sling County. Alternatives for action would be to approve and sign agreement 225-23, which details the agreement between KDOT and Sling County. The alternative number two would be to not approve the agreement and reject the funds. Staff recommends accepting and signing the agreement with KDOT. As far as a budget impact, the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program is a reimbursable program. Therefore, the local funds must pay for the initial construction of the projects. And so right now, the estimate is sitting at around $535,000. And these funds will come out of the 125 account, which is the 2 mil special bridge program, or account. The, then once we get the reimbursement funds, and those funds will go into our 127 account, which is our special highway improvement fund.
Questions or comments from commissioners?
Well, I was really kind of, when I first read this, and it was kind of interesting that the KDOT would accept that we're taking out a bridge, but we're putting a low-water crossing back in and not a bridge. So, and after reading this, it was kind of interesting that they approved even going back in with a low-water crossing, concrete crossing.
So the reason why we got these funds is because we're removing three bridges.
That's, that's what it is to remove them.
Yes, so there's, there's a push in the state of Kansas, you know, to get more sustainable and more, you know, in line with, you know, really Kansas has, well, you know, Kansas has the fourth most bridges in the nation, but we're 35th in population, so we've got a lot of infrastructure. You know, that's not really sustainable. And so there's a big push to, you know, try to remove, remove bridges. And when I say bridges, I'm talking about the federal definition of a bridge, and so that is a drainage structure with a span more than 20 feet. So that's, that's what they're trying to, to reduce.
Cool.
So.
Okay, but thank you.
Further comments?
Yeah, the, the McReynolds Road, is, is that a dirt road on each side of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, all, both of them, even the Lapsley Road is, it's a dirt road. It's a, they're, they're dead-end roads that lead to a few fields, you know, we've got to maintain access to. You know, and so I've, I've already talked with all the landowners and was able to obtain, we're just getting temporary easements, you know, for this, and everybody's very excited about the project. So we're looking at the ones on McReynolds Road, I mean, one's a three-ton bridge and the other one's an eight-ton bridge. Well, the only thing that goes, needs to get back in that area is ag equipment. You know, so they, they can't use those structures anyway.
Makes a lot of sense to me. Further comments? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-99 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-99, contract approval, Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries four zero. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number three.
RFA number 2023-107, jail project equipment and supplies.
And it looks like we're going to have Lieutenant Hayes or Philip Smith Haynes?
I'll, I'll start off and leave all the hard questions for Lieutenant Hayes.
All right, there you go.
So we're building a jail, in case anybody didn't know. So voters approved the project back in November of 2020, and we engaged Turner Construction. They are our construction manager at risk out there on site, putting up the structure. And we are in the home stretch, so to speak. We are just about four months away from getting the building turned over to the county. And so we are getting down to the point where we are talking about a few last-minute tweaks to the building, but we're talking a lot more about the equipment that is necessary to run the building once it is in the county's possession. So staff was last before your commission on April 11th and talked about some equipment purchases at that time. At that time, there was, out of the $89,655,000 approved by voters, there was about $1,229,864 left that was unspoken for. We've had a number of, of purchases and, and a couple of credits that have occurred since that time. Today, we're requesting nine different items. That one thing is what I would characterize as a, an actual structure on the site, which is fencing around the site. But the rest of it is all equipment. So maintenance equipment, kitchen equipment, IT equipment, equipment for transport, supplies, equipment for the jail, the shower system, et cetera. So there are a number of, of things that are being requested today. If the commission approves all of that, and we also anticipate a couple of further credits, then there would be approximately $100,000 worth of equipment left to buy. We have about $59,000 in other change orders that we're anticipating. And Turner has advised us that we should probably reserve about a quarter of a million dollars for things that we find at the very last minute. That's based on their extensive experience with these types of projects. So that leaves us just a shade under half a million dollars left that would be unspoken for with pending your approval today of these items. So that is my report, and I'd be happy to answer questions. Lieutenant Hayes has much more extensive knowledge of all the individual equipment and can delve into that if the commission wishes.
Before I get into my comments on this, I'll ask for other comments from commissioners or questions?
One question, 145 computer monitors. Where will those be made available and how will they be stored?
So that, that is getting, you know, we are getting all new computers for the facility, but we also need monitors for the computers as well. So we will purchase those and store them at our current sheriff's office until they're ready to be installed.
Where, where will these monitors be used?
All the offices. This is like all just regular computers in all the offices, all records, basically through the whole facility.
Okay. And the existing equipment that you're using now?
The plan was is to have all that new equipment so that we can move over and not have to share because we're going to have to have systems up and running in both facilities for, especially when we move corrections. So we can't, in a sense, rob from our facility, and we have to keep that system up and running. We need to be able to have that system up and running and move on the same day.
Right, but then what happens with that old equipment?
It would get filtered back. We'd keep it for, if monitors break over years, we could replace. Filtered into, anybody else needs it in the county, could use them.
Okay, I'd like to say that I arranged through Colby Shepherd, the, the construction manager for Turner onsite out there. I arranged for a jail tour yesterday, and most impressive. I'm impressed with Turner Construction. I'm impressed with our jail staff. I'm impressed with our administrator on how easily this has flowed. See, at least from my perspective, it's been easy. Man, what a facility, and it's something that Sling County and Salona, Kansas is going to be so very proud of to have a facility like this. And I don't remember until you go, if you go back as far as this building itself, you know, more than 50 years ago, that Sling County has undertook such a project. And it is something that we needed, and it's something that we're going to be very proud of. And on November the 2nd, when we have a Ruben cutting, I hope there's a lot of, of the community that's out there, the voters that approved this. It's, it's a whale of a facility, and, and, and we couldn't have done it without, you know, the people that I've just mentioned, Turner Construction and the sheriff's department, our administrator, and all the construction people. There's over 100, I think over 120 that Colby told me yesterday that are working onsite. So, and there's people everywhere, and it's a, it's a whale of a, of a facility. So come out and see it when we get to that November 2nd date. So thanks to everyone. I'll bring it back to the, I'll ask for any public comment on this approval. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA number 2023-107 as presented.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-107, jail project equipment and supplies. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries four zero. We'll move to item number four.
RFA number 2023-108, agreement with North Central Juvenile Detention for architect funding.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, commissioners. So completion of the jail, pending completion of the jail, has sort of begged the question of, so then what? In terms of county facilities. So the county has embarked on extensive process to try and identify future facility needs, including the reuse of the existing jail facility. So as part of that, we had a prior discussion around the potential of moving forward with a study on whether the juvenile justice folks out of Junction City would be a good fit for that facility. And they had requested as part of that that the county cost participate in such a study. And so at our prior discussion on this topic, the commission had directed staff to go back and negotiate an agreement with them. With County Councilor Mike Montoya's help, we have done that, and they have now approved it. And it is coming back to your commission for your approval. If your commission approves this, they would select the architect, but we would have the rights to the work product of the architect, and we would pay for 50% of the costs of that work, up to a maximum of $25,000, with the recommendation that that $25,000 expenditure, which is not budgeted this year, but the recommendation would be that it come from unexpended funds in the appropriations budget 026. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Phil, the $25,000 max is $25,000 from the county's standpoint, so it would be a $50,000 item.
Correct.
Also, I know that the city of Salona and the police department are, are in conversation with, with potentially getting part of that facility. Have we made certain that the juvenile facility and the police department aren't looking at, at the same area?
Yes.
I assume that would be taken care of.
Yes, so the police department is actually looking at the sheriff's offices and the 1962 portion of the jail. Juvenile folks are looking at the 1995 portion of the jail.
Let's assume that both of those projects go forward. How much of the facility would that still leave us over there?
Well, it's hard to answer that specifically because we don't know exactly the square footage that the juvenile folks would need, but I like to think of it mentally in terms of thirds. So a third city, a third juvenile, and a third kind of leftover for whatever we would like to do with it.
Absurd.
There you go.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
One thing that concerns me, Phil, is moving forward, if, if this should happen, that, that this becomes a revenue-neutral item for the county. I, I hate to see us take on another appropriation where we have the North, North Central Kansas Juvenile coming in every year wanting monies to maintain another facility. I don't think that's being fair to the taxpayers who voted to put a new jail up there, and then still we maintain another building.
Yes, so I appreciate those comments, Commissioner Weiss. So the plan would be, at least in my mind, to try and get us out of the business of maintaining that facility. So if the city is interested in part of the, the building, they would take maintenance responsibility. If juvenile folks are interested in part of the facility, they would take maintenance responsibility over that part that they occupy. Of course, juvenile detention is a county responsibility under state law, which is why we pay them quite a bit of money every year to house juveniles in Junction City. Their plan, however, is to, what I'm going to call cash flow the facility, by taking children in need of care as well as juvenile detainees. And so I think part of this study is for them to really nail down, is there sufficient space for them to do both and to make it work financially for them?
Assuming that this heads down that path, would, would we charge rent? Would we sell those portions to the building? Are we donating it? How's all that looking like? What's, what's, what's that look like?
All good questions, and I don't have specific answers. I will say it's probably either a 99-year lease for a dollar or something along those lines because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to try and sell it at market value because then we have to get assessed back the amount that we've sold it to them for, right? So.
I agree with that. From, from the Salona Police Department's standpoint, though, if we I agree with that. From the Salina Police Department's standpoint though, if we were to lease it to them for a nominal fee, I would suggest initially that we put that in a line, alignment with the 99-year lease that they signed with us in 1960 or 90 or whatever it was.
Yeah, actually, what we've been discussing with the city is for them to do a shorter-term lease on that portion of the facility, like a three to five-year term. And then, because part of what else we've discussed with the commission is to work with the city to do a study of a number of different facilities in the downtown area. Get through that process, decide where that's all going and then come back and make some final decisions about property ownership at that site.
I get it. I understand that.
We had a presentation from, it's not Community Corrections, the court services upstairs that they had a need, they'd been displaced and they had a need for office space and such. Has their problem been resolved or are we going to lease out properties for a dollar that we could put these people in and keep us from spending money somewhere else?
They don't want the space in the 95 portion of the jail.
Correct.
So we, in our conversations with the city of Salina, we are carving that up so that there would be space for court services on a short-term basis. Short-term being three to five years.
Okay, but the police and court services are interested in the same area?
In the portions of the same area, yes. Yeah.
These are good conversation points. I think we're getting a little far off of our path here to approval of this architect funding, but they're good questions and it's food for thought for certain. So is there any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action on RFA 2023-108.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-108 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-108, agreement with North Central Juvenile Detention for Architect Funding. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries four to zero. That concludes our action items. We'll move into the informational items, item number one.
Health Department update.
Jason Tiller, Health Department Director. Good morning, Mr. Tiller.
Good morning. Just waiting on the slides to come up. I do have a couple of updates from the slides I had sent you. Thank you. With, and I'll mention this again in a little bit, but with the Health Department moving over to the Salina County KS.gov email servers and away finally from the SSCHD.org email and network servers that we've been on for years, it was also a time to retire completely the SSCHD, which was originally left over from the Salina, Salina County Health Department, which also included the logo. So we have updated our logo for the Salina County Health Department using those influence from the county colors, from the county logo as we move forward now in this, this next stage of our, our health department. So this update covers November of 2022 to May and I have a lot of information in here. So we'll, we'll get through this maybe. If the technology will cooperate. Yes, I'll just tell you because it's not working. So next, there we go. All right, so clinic and probably for everybody, probably one of the biggest pieces of breaking news was that the public health emergency that had been enacted at the beginning of COVID, the national one had finally expired on May 11th. So there are no national orders. There's nothing else like that related to COVID anymore. It doesn't mean that COVID is still not floating around, so you know, protect your health just as you would from flu or RSV, which is, you know, highly contagious to or anything else. Clinic has begun the implementation of their electronic health record system with Patagonia and it is a monster of an implementation to move from a paper record-keeping system to an electronic one. So they'll be working on that for a couple of months. Of course, we've discussed, you know, the lab and their zero deficiency rating recently. And then just kind of coming up, we will have the annual flu clinic in October as we do every year with more information that would be coming out about that. We did, for the first time, kind of do a pilot on back-to-school immunizations at the end of the school year this year, instead of waiting till August when everybody is usually trying to get in. We did a small clinic and had a small turnout last week. And we do have another session on May 31st from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. If parents are interested in trying to get their back-to-school immunizations early. Next slide, please. For maternal-child health, continuing the expansion of becoming a mom and then also mentoring other MCH programs. You may remember several months ago approving a universal home visiting grant for MCH. And with that, they have been able to so far purchase 175 pack-and-plays, 145 car seats and over 1,000 sleep sacks, including updated educational programming, radio ads, everything to reach new moms. If you are like on your third child because there's always new things to learn. And that's a picture of our container the day after the semi-delivered all of the pack-and-plays that, of course, I think that day there was construction going on over at the island where HR and ARC are now. So we had to carry it from one parking lot all the way around and put it in there, but a team effort packed full. On administration, I'm excited to announce that we have hired our health educator. She started last Monday and we've been starting to work through the list of things, which includes the opioid prevention coalition or, you know, to look at opioid prevention that we discussed during the commissioners' visioning a while back. And then across the Health Department, we have, like I said earlier, we've moved our email and servers over to the new county one. And with the amazing help of our county ID department, our IT department, have been figuring out the bugs, Lauren's over here laughing because she's been with us every step too, figuring out the bugs and being the guinea pigs for the rest of the county so that hopefully when the rest of the county moves over soon, that it will be a much smoother. And a lot of those things have been figured out as the rest of the county eventually moves as well. Childcare licensing busy as always, trying to recruit, but just a couple of weeks ago, or last week actually, was childcare provider appreciation day. And it's really difficult to try and do some sort of appreciation for all the childcare providers because they put a lot of work in, but they did this small event of a provider disco party on Friday evening as a thank you to them, give them a chance to be able to be recognized. You know, man, have a little fun because while, you know, caring for children can be rewarding, as a grandfather with three small grandchildren, it could also be extremely tiring too. So we're proud of our childcare providers and the work that they do out there. Home health, they have just, you know, been continuing to provide excellent service. We have in the last few months finally hired a, another home health nurse and a home health homemaker. And they've been preparing for their annual home health audit, which will actually be tomorrow. And although they may be hard to read right now, these are snippets of comments that they have received from their clients. They don't generally get, you know, Facebook posts, shout-outs. So, but most of theirs are handwritten from their clients or their families. WIC has been busy as well as they have added and filled positions for a WIC nurse and a peer breastfeeding counselor. Their active participation is still running at about 883 clients with 63, excuse me, 63 new each month. That translates to WIC participants statewide have spent over $500,000 in Salina County at the participating vendors that take WIC. The formula shortage has been widely, pretty much resolved. You don't really hear much about it. Unfortunately, that didn't do anything to the cost of formula, but with WIC services, we assist where we can. And the Kansas WIC program is going to be going through some modernization, I think from lessons learned during COVID with technology and et cetera. So look for some additional information. WIC runs on a federal fiscal year, so running from October to September as opposed to the county calendar year and the grants, July to June fiscal year. And so we'll be finishing up those budgets for WIC in June so that they can be submitted for this next grant year starting in October. So we got the advisory council up and running. We've had two meetings this far. The first one was just primarily focused on orientation. The second one was to set a meeting schedule. And one of the things that we have discussed that I'm kind of excited about because I've wanted to do it for a while is the development of an annual report on public health for Salina County. So at our last meeting of the advisory council, we talked through a bunch of different examples I was able to find from around the state and looking at different elements that would be interesting to the public without creating a encyclopedia-sized report that nobody would then want to read just because there would be too much information. So we'll kind of be working through that some through this year and hopefully have the first one out by the beginning of 2024. There on the right-hand side, you can see the members of the council. We still have a vacant position and we are really looking for somebody in the community to be part of it, to provide us some community perspective, kind of outside of the healthcare, local government, nonprofit, you know, worlds that most of the members come from. Academic partnerships, this is one of the things that helped make us a recognized health department, but also a great place for people to come to and to learn. So we have several academic partnerships. We finished up and graduated essentially our first intern from our Kansas Rural Public Health Fellowship. She did her internship and then her capstone with us started in August, I believe it was. And then we, right now anticipate we'll have another one starting in the fall. We have had a nursing student from Kansas or KU School of Nursing here in Salina for the last couple of months. We, we being myself and Melissa McCoy, the PIO, worked on a KU Health Communications project with a team from that academic group. K-State has recently started a Bachelor of Science in Public Health program. I met with them last week and then we will have our first summer intern from their program starting around the 1st of June. And then with our KU partners at the School for Population Health, the regional assessment of gaps and strengths related to public health is still ongoing. And that information will be used to help kind of look at our five-year projection of public health, not only in the county, but when it comes to shared services like we have on some things already to be able to strengthen the region. So May is Mental Health Awareness Month among a long list of other observances, also included Nurses Appreciation Week. But the one thing I wanted to kind of focus in on this is Cope Notes. And I've seen, you know, I know we've mentioned Cope Notes before, the county has still got redemption codes out there for Cope Notes. I use Cope Notes. I recommend it highly. I have included a screenshot from a couple of them. I've shared Cope Notes that I've received with family members that, you know, have really kind of spoken to them, maybe to reflect on. And I just want to mention too, that being Mental Health Awareness Month and Memorial Day coming up this weekend, which seemed to come up very, very quickly, that while most of us are probably going to be, you know, grilling out on Monday or, you know, in time with family and friends, for a lot, Memorial Day is a difficult day too, as they remember those that they lost either in combat in the armed services or as first responders in the field. So just check on your buddies on Monday because while I still plan to grill out, it can be, you know, tough for a lot of people. Chatty, we started this project in conjunction with this Salina Family Healthcare, oh, just a few months ago. This was also part of our interns' capstone. It stands for the Community Health Action Team for Equity. We are working right now with our local nonprofits to build some small action teams. And we are, again, just like for the Health Department Advisory Council, we are looking for community members so that we can make sure that whatever projects that we're taking on, these 30-day action plans. And the point of these 30-day action plans is to try and make small incremental movement, not get stuck in the cycle of planning to plan and planning to plan and, you know, six months later, you still haven't really accomplished anything. But we don't want to make plans about parts of the community without that community involvement. So we are really looking for that community involvement. We will have some more information coming out about really how to get directly involved because we just met yesterday to discuss recruiting for community members. And that will be forthcoming, so be looking for that. It's summertime, so along with the pool and grilling out, also comes the mosquitoes. We have entered into a project with KDHE and Kansas Biological Survey to do mosquito surveillance again this year. And so KBS, Kansas Biological Survey, they're going to have five mosquito traps set up around the county. They are going to be collecting those weekly between June 5th and October 23rd. They'll take them back to a lab, they'll process them, they're looking for anything like the types of mosquitoes and so forth, as well as for indications of mosquito-borne diseases like West Nile virus. And as that surveillance information is completed from the lab, it will be shared with us. If there are indications of any type of health threat, then that will be communicated back out to the community as well. Without this, we would have to try and rely on information six or seven counties away, if not further, which really wouldn't be accurate for us. So a couple of things to help with that. We've done this for years, but it's still just as important. Every Wednesday, we say is dump day. Although we haven't had a lot of rain in the last few days, so I doubt there's a ton of standing water around, but it's just a reminder to dump out your standing water because that's breeding ground for mosquitoes. If you have large bodies of water that are not able to be dumped out and that are stagnant bodies of water, then you can get mosquito tablets, which is help kill mosquitoes and keep them from breeding on the surface. Some other things you can do to protect yourself, of course, mosquitoes bite during the day as well, not just at night. There are different types. So if you're outside, you know, using. So if you're outside, you know, using insect repellent, long sleeves and protection is not only good for mosquitoes, but also sun protection. And then in your homes, trying to make sure that you don't have holes in your screens that would let mosquitoes inside the house. This one is actually a little bit older. It was back in September. Unfortunately, I didn't get the picture or the rest of the language from the proclamation until later. But as the Chair of the North Central Healthcare Coalition, I was invited to be part of the contingent that went to the proclamation signing at the Governor's Office, which named September 22nd to September 26th as Kansas Healthcare Coalition Week. Unfortunately, like I said, I didn't have any of the information because I think we did the proclamation that week in order to be able to present anything at that time, but I finally received that in the last couple of months. And so it was an interesting event going up there for that. I think there were about, I don't know, fifteen or twenty groups in line to go in, have a proclamation, have a picture, shake hands and out the other door. So it was, it was an interesting insight into, you know, how that works when you go up there at the Capitol Building. This past Governor's Public Health Conference, myself, am our PIO, Melissa McCoy, were speakers at two different sessions of the Public Health Conference. An interesting turn of events that usually when I or somebody else is being interviewed, Melissa is our PIO, is texting us things to remember for, for different things. And in this session, I got to be the one texting her about things to remember as she's up there on the panel and speaking. But she did a great job and we are excited that we are able to be able to talk about, you know, the good things that are happening in Saline County at these state conferences and representing the county. On your cover sheet, you do have our expenditures year-to-date for 2022 and 2023. And so that for January to April timeframe, we are still looking good as far as our expenditures. One thing I wanted to focus on for this morning is that I've been trying to work on some, looking at trends on different parts of our budget and our revenues. And I thought this was an interesting one to share, that looking from 2018 to 2022, the trend in our user fees and how, starting in 2020 and then 2021, of how it was impacted by COVID because we didn't have as many clients coming in, we couldn't do as much during those periods. And then to see that we have started that rebound showing in 2022. And then the rebound still seems to be going strong. As you can see on our 2023 revenues, that at this same period compared to last year, we are already looking better on our total revenues, including grants. So I'm trying to incorporate more of these kind of trend analyses when I do my, my updates. And with that, I will, I'm open to questions.
Questions from the Commissioners. I have a comment here, Jason, on your budget updates. The revenues for 2022 and 23 far exceed the expenditures. I have to assume that some of that is ARPA funds?
It's generally, so for the quarter, we will have all of our expenditures and then at the end of the quarter, we submit all of our grant financial statements. And then depending on when all of those grant reimbursements come in, which by April, we have submitted for that first quarter's reimbursements. So usually towards the end of April, we have a lot of our grant repayments coming in. And so that's one of the kind of trends I'm looking at to kind of see how we flow throughout the year. But as we were working on our budget for this year, that's where the five-year trend became helpful for that.
So matter of timing more than as much as anything.
Absolutely.
I do want to make the comment that during my time left on the Commission, I have, trying to prioritize things and looking at the Health Department and the facility is number one on my list. I do want you to know that. Obviously, the Commission's got a lot going, the whole county has, has a tremendous amount of things going, but we're going to get that facility or renovation, whatever we do, you're, you're up there, you're on the top of the list for me anyway.
Yes, sir.
And we're, we're working on that, we're going to get with it.
Thank you, sir.
Other comments from Commissioners? If not, thank you very much for your participation and your time.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
Overview of 2024 Budget Requests.
Mr. Smith-Ains.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So it is budget season. We're actually about what I would characterize as halfway into budget season at this point. The Commission has talked about budgets a couple of times back in February and March, and then most of April consisted of departments compiling their requests for next year. Presenting an overview to you today, this will sort of launch into the more public part of the process. So we will be next week having meetings with departments to go over some of those requests. And then we'll be back in front of you in June, June 20th, with the county administrators' recommended budget. We will have the appeal process and then by July 18th, we'll need to decide whether to hold the revenue-neutral rate hearing this year culminating in adoption of the budget on August 22nd. So as I said, departments have submitted their requests for how they would spend the funds that they have currently, as well as any new items that they would like to see for improvements or inflation or, you know, all types of different requests. And so compiled all of those and it turns out that there are quite a few requests for next year. And in fact, for the five property tax-supported funds, other than the one mil and two mil funds, which we know what those are going to be, the increase from this year to what has been requested for next year is about a sixteen and two-thirds percent increase or seven and a half million dollars. So the upshot of that is we are not going to be able to fund all of that. I am not going to recommend all of that to you on June 20th. So we are now in a process where, as I said, we'll be back next week for some discussions with departments and we'll be really looking at what do we do to decrease that number, get that number more in line with, with where we expect our revenues to be so that we're not asking the taxpayers for a significant increase. So the good news about that is that several of the things that are included in these requests are things that we have discussed, but are kind of long-term plays. So we had talked about, actually last December, we had talked about the idea of having some additional budget stabilization funds and non-general, in non-general fund, funds of the county. We had talked about some increased transfers to prepare ourselves for upcoming capital projects, like the Chairman just mentioned, potential new health departments. So there are quite a few enhancements of that kind in here that while they're important, they're probably not, they're probably not necessary to fund in '24 in view of where we are with total requests versus revenues. This proposal also includes a fairly robust request in terms of salaries. So we probably are not going to end up there as well, and that will, will shrink the gap substantially. So that's, that is where it is. This is what everyone has requested to this point in the process and we will, like I said, narrow it down from this point. So be happy to answer any questions.
Next week's meeting involves the budget and that will be open to the public, obviously. And will they, will we have all of the department heads participating?
We will not have all of the department heads. There are a couple of department heads who did not request anything and it's not real, I mean, the only change in their budget is salaries and so there's not really a point in having a lengthy discussion with them. So they've, they've, I've certainly given them the opportunity, but they've, they've chosen not to participate because they're not asking for anything. So it will, it will be the majority of the department heads will meet right next door in, in Room 107B. And we do plan to broadcast the meeting as well.
Very good. Comments, questions from Commissioners? All righty, we'll move to item number three.
Commissioner comments.
Anyone have anything?
I just want to say I attended last week the fallen service employees of Saline County out at Bill, I mean, Jerry Ivy Park, and it was very well-attended by a lot of people. It was great, it was a good turnout and it was very, it was an interesting situation. Yeah.
Anything else? All right, item number four.
Announcements.
I'll just remind everyone that county offices will be closed on Monday for Memorial Day.
All right. We have three executive sessions in a row, all pertaining to personnel, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, staff would request that the Commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a department head performance evaluation for five minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:04.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we move into executive session for non-elected personnel for five minutes. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Session on non-elected personnel, no action was taken. We'll move to item number two, which is also an executive session for non-elected personnel.
Also for a department head, and I would say seven minutes.
Which would put us back in here at 10:12, according to the clock.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded that we move into executive session for seven minutes for non-elected personnel. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, motion.
Post same sign, motion carries, we're in executive session. Post same sign, motion carries, we're in executive session. Post same sign, motion carries, we're in executive session.